Okay, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call a meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledgeions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no need for a roll call. Everybody's present. All business. Approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of seven, August 2025, are provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of seven, August 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address accounts on an item that is not on the agenda? Please come up and state your name and address. Give us what you got.
Hey, Mayor, Commissioners, Chase Spears, at 529 Bear Suite Road, just across the street. Chase Spears, 529 Bear Suite Road. Got me now?
Yeah.
All right, good deal. Sorry, a little soft spoken sometimes. Just wanted to bring one issue to you, and is there going to be public comment on the tax increase later on as well? Yes. Okay, so I'll get to that later then. I'm sure some of you have probably seen, we've had a lot of contractors running around the area lately, laying, I presume, laying some sort of fiber optic cable. My neighborhood in particular has been under about a two-week assault from a group that has a fleet of trucks called Tex Excavating Incorporated. I'm not a Luddite. I understand utilities have to be upgraded. I understand new cables have to be run. I like electricity and internet access just as much as the rest of us all in the room. But I also like to have someone come knock on my door and let me know if they're going to be walking all over my yard. I also like them not to be knocking out my power for hours on end, and then when I call them about it, ignoring me. We had one afternoon, several days, we had workers all over my yard like it was theirs. I understand there's an easement from the road. My second home that I've owned, so I understand those things in the city. I did not understand that the entirety of my lot is an easement that contractors can come and go from and lay and run equipment over and leave conduit laying across.
Yeah, so staff, do we know any work going in that area?
I think that's the subcontractor for AT&amp;T Fiber Internet.
Yeah. And so I reached out to Tim and Josh, and they gave me some contact information to reach out to the contractor. I did try to reach out to the subcontractor, said, hey, guys, what's going on? You're all over my land. You've knocked out my power. We're incurring expenses. Go out to dinner. You knocked out my ability to work for a couple hours today. The gentleman on the phone actually initially tried to blame me for my power being out. And I said, well, it probably had something to do with that piece of excavating equipment you had in my backyard all day that was punching holes where my power box is, because you knocked out my neighbors on either side of me as well. So let's not try to blame me for knocking my own power out when I was inside all day. And then he asked if he could come talk to me the next day. I said, sure, I'd be happy to do that. He never showed up. And so kind of, I appreciate the work the staff did to try to help me get in touch with those guys. But my contention is, the city issues permits.
Right.
And if I go call a contractor for AT&amp;T, little Chase Spears, what are they going to do? They're going to do the same thing that the local manager did, blow me off. If the city calls and says, hey dudes, stop acting like you own the property upon which our residents live, or we'll have some permitting issues, they'll probably take that call. So I just ask that you gentlemen, look into this a little bit more. Again, I'm not against improvements, but, you know, a heads up, hey, we're going to be here, and not treating my property that I live on like it's there. So, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
There's no time limit on this previous thing, so I don't know what we're timing, but, okay. Yeah, sometimes trying to get internet to everybody is also painful. I mean, I think when Clearwave and AT&amp;T were both going through, they dug, both of them dug in my yard, and then they did this with, who did the damage? Like, you see, I see. So, understand the issue.
We can reach out to the contractor. Mr. Spears brings up some really good points.
Yeah.
He shouldn't be all over his yard. Okay. So, new business, public hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and approval of the resolution number B8 2025 to exceed revenue neutral rate. KSA 792988 establishes notice and public hearing requirements for certain taxing entities seeking to collect property taxes in excess of the taxing entity's revenue neutral rate. As presented at the June 26, 2025 work session, the City of Lansing intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate of 39.74, or 54 mills. The proposed mill levy is 41.909. So I need a motion to open the public hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate and approval of resolution B8 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council on this one?
Good evening, gentlemen. Can you hear me well?
We can hear you.
All right. I am Sarah George, 532 Holiday Court. And I forgot my readers, so I'm going to be standing back. My first public comment statement that I wanted to make was about the flyer that came out. I felt like that was extremely opaque and vague about a proposed tax increase, because if I'm a John Q, if I'm just a regular taxpayer here who doesn't especially have a lot of time to read in depth what I'm getting from the city, if it says this is not a bill, I really would have just set it aside and not look at it. And it says this is not a bill, but it doesn't say this will become a bill very soon unless you go and make your voice heard.
Are you talking about the form you get from the county?
The form that I got from the county that said, propose to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Right.
Which essentially is, it's a bill. It's a bill that's going to come in a tax from the city. So it's based on the school district, it looks like, from how I'm reading it. And my issue is that we don't have a problem with needing more tax dollars. We have a problem with mismanagement and poor stewardship of the tax dollars. I'm here to advocate for the people who maybe don't have time to come to these meetings. It is a working night, and parents who have kids involved in sports and activities, who don't maybe get to spend the day with their kids, don't get to come to these meetings. And it's just, it's a lot to ask for the public to come here. And so I'm here advocating for them and for working moms and parents who just, quite frankly, can't see the long-term effects of what's happening in our city. So far, these tax increases have caused an increase in my mortgage payment of over $117 since last year. Now, all the previous years, the taxes had been making my mortgage go up and up. And I had said, well, that's just kind of the way things are. But quite frankly, it's really come to the point that this has gotten to be enough. I have paid over and over, and it's just, my mortgage is jumping up increasingly. And it's just one of many. Citizens steward their budget resources. That's what all of us have to do by not getting new cars, buying things on sale, thrifting, et cetera. But we can't avoid tax increases because they're forced by you, the governing entities. You are the arm to take dollars from citizens, and usually we are supportive of the necessary and required government expenses. But we expect you to be wise with how you steward our resources. You wouldn't make a wasteful decision with budgetary resources and then ask your boss to give you more money to rectify your mistake. But it appears as though that's what the school board is doing. And you think doing nothing with that, you think nothing of doing just that with the taxpayers, knowing that most of them won't know you're asking for more money until it's too late, when they're taxed out of their budget. There was only one school board member at the county meeting yesterday, and I just think it's really appalling that people don't even deign to listen to what citizens are saying. And people are having to go to the county board of supervisors because they don't feel heard, and it's really unfortunate.
Okay.
Do I have to stop?
That's your time.
That was my time. Thank you, sir. Did you want me to, like, sign in also? Physically?
I'm sorry. We did not call roll, right, to open the public hearing?
What's that?
We did a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, call a roll. We're not even in open hearing yet.
Oh, why?
For our minutes, we can count that as part of the public hearing, because we found out right away, but we didn't want to interrupt her during her time.
We have a motion and a second. I said we were in an open hearing. I thought we went through that. Okay.
We did not call roll.
Vote.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. Now the public hearing is open. Although we've heard from the public. However, anybody else would like to speak on the revenue neutral rate?
Sarah, I hope she gets a fresh start.
I know. I heard a lot of school board taxing, but I didn't, I mean, we don't, just so everybody knows, we don't control the school board. I mean, the school is their own entity and their own taxing entity. If we could control them, we would.
We're in the audience right now, though.
Or the county.
Or the county, yeah. Please.
It's me again, gentlemen. Good to see you. All right, I'm not on the clock. Sorry, I get double time. No, I'm joking. I also wanted to talk about the revenue neutral slash tax increase. And I'd sent notes to my commissioners earlier. I didn't think I'd be able to be here tonight, but had a change of work schedule, was able to. You know, I did a quick look at the budget, and I appreciate y'all making this available. My, I'm not a math guy. My rough reading of it is looking like going from a just under $28 million budget to 29 and a half, roughly about a 16-ish rough math increase, a percent increase, if I'm looking at it correctly. If I'm wrong, I'd be happy to be corrected. But regardless, you know, in a good year, a really, 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 really-
You gotta speak up. Those old guys can't hear you.
All right, in a really, really good year, maybe if I'm lucky, I can knock my budget up at home, maybe two, maybe on a really phenomenal year, maybe upwards of 5%. And that just kind of keeps up with the cost of groceries. Like Sarah, our, my payment is going up every single year. My payment went up roughly $900 this year. So when I saw there was another look at potentially raising taxes again, I was just like, how much blood is in this term? I would ask you gentlemen to take a closer look. I mean, I'm looking at just like pool expenditures. And by the way, I loved swimming there this summer. It's awesome. But, you know, I was told, hey, we have an increase in sales tax will help pay for that. Now I'm seeing a jump up from, you know, looking at a million dollars being spent on that next year. So I kind of want to echo Sarah that maybe we need to look at these numbers a little bit closer, because there's only so much blood you can squeeze out of the turnips. And I know you guys probably feel that personally as well, but I just want to reiterate it for the rest of us. Thanks so much.
Okay. Now, I'll mention to everybody who's here, previously during some of our discussions with RHID, we had a lot of folks come in and talk about, hey, your comprehensive plan isn't up to date. One of the things that's driving up a little bit of our budget is redoing the comprehensive plan. So, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to do both things at the same time. So, and I think that we're only, I want to say we're going flat. That still provides, what, 280K more than what we would have pulled last year if we don't increase our mill levy at all. The state requires you to go, or at least the state requires you to have a public hearing, when you're not going revenue neutral. But revenue neutral means you're using the same revenue that you did last year this year. And as most people know, you can't do that. I mean, we don't control asphalt prices. We don't control gas. We don't control a lot of the stuff that is increasing. So, I mean, the guidance to our budget folks, and, I mean, the council's been pretty good at this, is let's use the CPI plus revenue neutral. So what is the inflation rate, plus what the state is asking us. And just so you know, the state's going to change that law, because they know it doesn't work. You just can't keep using last year's budget, you know, all the way in the future. It doesn't work. Most people know that. So, I'll go around, since there's no more, do we want to close the public hearing? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the taxes?
Need to approve the resolution first.
Right. So first, we're going to ask for a motion to approve the resolution of B8 2025 to exceed the revenue neutral rate? What? Oh, okay.
No, they changed the way they did it, and you have to approve the resolution before you close the hearing.
Hang on, we're good. All right, we need a motion to approve resolution B8 2025 to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
So moved.
Second.
Now, the council can have discussion, and then we'll close the hearing.
You mentioned flat. I believe we are staying at the same mill levy we did last year. Is that correct? Or are we adding?
We're not adding any mills. The way it's published is flat. I don't know, we've been kicking around different options and things like that. I don't think there's any way we can be revenue neutral this year, but we've been kicking around-
I understand that. I just want to know, the stated mill levy rate that we had last year is the same mill levy rate we're going to have this year.
Correct. Yes.
Because of revenue neutral. Now, we're going to receive more funds, we all know that, because valuations all went up.
Correct.
And CPI went up, and everything else went up.
About $287,000 more if we kept it flat, correct?
And we're going to keep it flat, is what I'm understanding.
That's the recommendation, is to-
Yeah, okay. Great.
And the big driver for that is a comprehensive budget plan?
Correct.
Can we do the comprehensive plan over two years? Like, do, if there's eight sections, one, three, four, and the option here would be five through eight, and spread them across two budgets?
Yeah. So that's one of the ideas that we were going to bring up to you guys. Even if we're able to do that, we'd still be above revenue neutral. So I think we were planning on doing that during the next budget discussion. But yeah, that was one of the options we were going to talk to you guys about, to spread that out over two years rather than one.
Do we have the capacity to do it totally in-house and avoid that cost altogether?
I don't think so. That would be incredibly difficult. I think in 2013 or 14, when we did it last time, it was pretty labor-intensive, and there's a lot of specialty things that people would do. So I don't think we would have that capacity to do that in-house.
But I had to.
Yeah, I understand.
So question, if we spread that out over two years, could we go revenue neutral plus CPI? No?
I think we'd still be a little bit higher.
We'd be a little bit high, but then there was another idea that we'd had to lower it a little bit more. And that was scaling back the transfer for equipment for next year. You know, obviously, that's not ideal or anything like that. But, I mean, if that's something that we want to look at, I mean, we could potentially scale back the transfer, yeah, the transfer for equipment for next year.
What kind of savings would that be, Tim?
We're, we have, what, $100,000 transferred for equipment next year? So, this morning, as we were kicking around ideas, we were trying to verify with other departments if they can get by with their existing mowers, existing trucks, things like that. We're not purchasing any police cars out of the general fund or anything. I think we're only getting one police car next year, and that's coming from special police. So I would certainly hope if we, the second component of that idea, if we scale back the equipment transfer, I would hope that's only temporary. But for 2026, that would save us another $100,000.
It'd be about, a $350,000 house, it'd be about $30.
Yeah.
But if we do that-
A year?
A year.
If we do that, then you can expect the budget 27 to be a little higher, because we got to pay that bill at some point.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this sort of road on our calendar for next year?
What's that?
I mean, 147th Street, that Culver, or whatever, where that big transfer is raised.
We were, so we were concerned doing that next year, because next year's the 250th anniversary. So I think we were concerned of tearing that up if we have a lot of people for the fireworks or something.
We moved it to 27.
Yeah, so we're looking at doing that in 2027, yeah.
Like, when we do this, Tim, the thing, first thing pops in my mind, if we put the equipment on hold.
Yeah.
You're kicking the can down the road then.
Yep.
So-
I just wanted to give you guys options.
Right. And I appreciate that. But then, next year, we're going to have to-
Yeah.
Answer that.
Yeah.
Right. Depending on what's coming down the road, right? So if you kick the can down the road, we know that rejected, we might have something coming in of a lot of sales tax, more revenue than you can kick it down the road, because we know we might have something. So, maybe not this year, but the following year. I'm just saying, you have to look future too, on what could be coming in as revenue.
And just to confirm, Tim, I mean, prior to us throwing that out there, we did double check with the department heads to make sure we don't have a mower on its last leg or anything like that. So, you know, again, I think if we dial the transfer back for equipment, I would recommend that only be temporary. But if we're looking for something to help out a little bit more, that's something that could help out a little bit more for one year.
Tim, when you say temporary, you just mean for 2026?
Yeah, I would envision putting that money back for 2027.
Okay.
And hopefully by that point, there's more sales tax coming in, or maybe new houses, new businesses, something like that. Did I kind of accurately explain that?
Yeah.
My biggest fear is I don't want to get like the situation the county's found itself in. They deferred bridge maintenance to the point where they've actually had a bridge collapse into the stream. And what do we do now? And they're having to cut a jet to fix the bridge. I don't want to get there.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to have a failure on 147th Street. We know it needs replaced. We've known it needs replaced. We put, I think, probably the last Band-Aid we can put in there, Mike?
I can't predict the future.
Right. But that repair, though, that repair is in 2027. We're talking up to 2026, but-
It's in 2027.
Okay, so, so I get that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, for this discussion, we should stick with 2026.
Sure. And you're referring to more money next year coming in? We're hoping more money comes in. We don't know that that will-
That's speculative on my part. But that's, ideally, that would be nice if we were generating more sales tax, or if there was new businesses or something.
Mike, you got any, can you foresee the future if we're going to have more money coming in or not, anyway?
No.
Still not?
I can't promise it won't fall in the creek either, but I don't anticipate it.
Beth, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer this or not, but from a historical perspective, let's say in the last five years, how often have we raised revenue neutral? Or how often have we increased revenue?
We were revenue neutral for three years, I believe. And then, and we had the reserves. We were able to do that. And that's what we should do. We don't want to carry a bunch of reserves, and then we're still taxing people unnecessarily. So we whittled down those reserves. We're kind of at the point now where our reserves are really where they need to be, and we don't want to be-
I remember you telling us that during the work session.
So we-
Last year, we hit, like, where we don't want to dip anymore into the reserves, which-
Yeah. So then we've been trying to maintain a flat mill levy.
I wanted to ask a question to make sure that our residents know that we have done our due diligence on, you know, doing our best to have, use the funds that we have wisely. And, you know, that says a lot about this board. And even, that's even before I came on the board. I was aware that you guys had remained revenue neutral. So I just want the public to know that. If you're getting to a point where you're going to have to start cutting things so that, you know, you can maintain your city, I don't think that's where we want to be. I don't think that's where our residents want us to be. Everything that we're doing right now, we need to do because we want to have a fine city to live in. So I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you.
I just want to get in on the tail end of that. In 2021, Lansing Mills was 41.571 in '21. In '22, they were 41.031, a slight decrease. In '23, they were 36.448, another decrease. And in 2024, we went down to 32.912. So in '21, we started at 41, and in 2024, we were down to 32. I challenge you to find another city that did that. It went up to, and in 2024, we all paid 8.922% to the Leavenworth County Fire District, number one. We're still paying that, but instead of paying that to the fire district, we're paying it to the city. So that's a lot of where your 41.909 is a tax you were already paying. We were all paying. We all pay taxes. We don't get a break or a deal, because we sit up here. And I don't like my taxes going up any more than anybody else. But it was 41.909 last year, and it's proposed to be 41.909 again this year.
Anyone else? I agree with what the mayor said earlier about the cost of everything going up. You know, that's the big deal, because if we don't, if we don't have revenue coming into the city, we don't have money for our infrastructure projects, for repaid streets like Mike's team does, three new sewers like Tony's team does, to buy vehicles and equipment and pay the employees like our first responders. If we stop collecting revenue to pay all these things, it falls apart. Then what happens? Then we're getting fingers pointed at us, saying, why aren't you fixing these things? Because we don't have any money. So we have to have that money to fix these things. We live in a world today where people will sit in a line 10 cars deep at Starbucks to pay $15 for a cup of coffee. I mean, that's reality nowadays.
My granddad will do that.
My kid will do it. I know. I want to reference what happened in Wyandotte County last year. It's not a complete apples-to-apples, but I think proves the point. Last year, Wyandotte County went revenue neutral, and the citizens were told upfront, you're going to give stuff up. Neighborhood programs, infrastructure projects were all off the table. And now this year, because of what they did last year, their property tax is going up 17%. Again, I challenge you to find somebody who's done the job.
Yeah, I mean, and I think it's a known fact, even the state has admitted that the original bill that they had for revenue neutral, it doesn't work. I mean, they're trying to fix that now. And I think what they will go to is like revenue neutral plus inflation. So you could at least argue the inflation part. Anybody else have any other comment up here? Okay, so I need a motion to close the public hearing. No, I don't. All right.
We need to vote on the resolution.
Oh, we already had a motion and a second. I asked for a discussion. So we have a motion and a second to approve resolution B8 2025 to exceed revenue neutral rate.
So moved.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kovaloski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item number three is a public hearing on consideration of the proposed 2026 budget. Staff, please present the proposed 26 budget for the City of Lansing for consideration. The notice of public hearing summarizes the proposed budget and was published in the Leavenworth Times on August 9, 2025. The proposed 2026 budget includes $740,260 worth of capital and supplemental request, as discussed in the June 27 work session. Proposed budget reflects a flat mill levy rate, but exceeds a revenue neutral rate by 2.15 mills, which equals approximately $287,148. So I need a motion to open the public hearing to consider the proposed 26 budget.
So moved.
Begging.
Okay, so the public hearing is open. Okay, so the public hearing is open.
Get a vote.
Call or roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Now the public hearing is open. Sorry. Got a lot of opening, closing and voting in the middle of these things. Kind of confusing. Okay, so is there anyone in the public that would like to come and speak? Who has not spoken or wants to speak again to really drive it home, one of the two? Okay, we have no takers. So I need a motion to close the public hearing for consideration of the proposed 2026 budget.
So moved.
Begging. I have a motion and a second. Call or roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. I'll now ask if there's any discussion by the council. We've already kind of talked about it.
Are we going to move this little comprehensive plan? Are we able to do that? Dollar wise, I mean, if we split it, that would cut this 287,000 almost in half. We're able to do it across two years.
Do you want to feel bad?
It'll cut, it'll, it'll change the mill levy to 41.061. Technically, it's 230,000 that was budgeted for that comprehensive plan. So we'd do like 112.5.
So almost a mil.
So that'd be a savings, again, on a $350,000 house, that'd be a savings of $34.13 approximately.
Per year.
Per year.
And if we didn't, you said it was?
200, oh, the, the mill levy?
What it would be per month?
Oh, per month, it, well, that's the, that's the difference. Yeah. So for the year, the diff, the difference is it'd be $35 more than that roughly. So it'd be currently on a $350,000 house at, at a flat mill levy, it's about $1,686.84. And at, if we cut it in half, it'd be $1,652.71.
Is Josh, Josh, you got any comments on that? Like, is it possible? Is it a good idea? Is it a bad idea? I mean, you're the person who's running the comprehensive plan, so I prefer you discuss.
Yeah, I appreciate the, thank you for asking. So comprehensive plans are typically 12 plus months. So we, if we were going to do this, I was going to try to get the RFP out in the next couple of weeks to try to hit the ground running on essentially January 5th to get everything started because there will be a number of stakeholder groups. They're going to be talking with you guys. They're going to be talking with the planning commission. They're going to be running open houses. We can try to split, split the difference and, and come up with scope. I think, I will be back before you guys then twice for a money ask, once for '26 and then once again for '27 to authorize that. We can come up with the, the way to schedule the scope of work that gets done in '26 and then in '27, so.
I mean, can it be done in two parts and doesn't make sense to them, I guess is what I'm? Like, are there things you can do in year one?
Yeah. So essentially, I, I think what would happen is that we would do the majority of the public engagement and data analysis in the beginning of the, or in '26. And then they will start, you know, writing or whatever, but then the drafts probably wouldn't be published until '27. So we could try to, we could try to run it that way.
Can you give us an idea of everything that this plan covers and includes and looks at?
Comprehensive.
It's a long list.
Comprehensive is, in fact, comprehensive. Now, we, we, we are, as you guys know, there's the wastewater master plan, which is kind of an ongoing thing that, that sometimes gets roped into a comprehensive plan. We don't necessarily need to do that. We have the parks master plan that is also, will be at least referenced in the comprehensive plan. There's going to be economic development. There's going to be future land use. There's going to be demographic analysis and extrapolation for the future. There will be a look at public infrastructure in terms of our city buildings and what does that look like for? I'm assuming we're going to be looking at a 2040 plan, if not a 2020, 2045 plan. And so we will look at the transportation network. And we're going to hopefully, at some point in the next couple of months, figure out where KDOT wants to put K5. That's going to change potentially things for Lansing. We're going to look at, you know, before, the last comprehensive plan didn't have the, the upgrades to McIntyre Road involved in that, in that discussion. So that has happened. There's going to, so, let's see, parks, wastewater, infrastructure, city buildings, demographics, economic development, land use, zoning. There's going to be a piece that if we change the big, because what this is doing is setting a vision, right? We're, we're bringing somebody in to be able to talk to everybody in the city, or at least try to talk to everybody in the city, and say, what do we want Lansing to look like in 2045? They're going to ask a bunch of questions, the exact same, or they're going to ask a bunch of questions trying to get the, the answer to rise, you know, the cream to rise, right? The answers rise to the surface. And then they're going to help us create a document with the vision. And then there's going to be a, the zoning code portion of that, which will help enable us to get to that vision, so.
And I understand why you can't do it.
Well, yeah, it's a, it's a couple, easily a couple hundred.
If they don't, he does this a year.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not feasible to do it within, but is it feasible to split it? And that, that's kind of the question.
If it's feasible, then what we should do might be two different things as well. I mean, how many times have we referenced the comprehensive plan in the need for a new one? And now we're going to delay it for two years and we're making decisions about RHID and equipment. Maybe we don't, maybe it's something we could do, but is it something that we really should do?
I mean, the current one goes to 2030. Is that what it's? I mean, so if we say this goes to 2045 and then in 2040, we started saying we need a new comprehensive plan, maybe we need a different company. I mean, it's kind of like, how much, how dated did it get? You know, I mean, I, I know people look at the comprehensive plan and use it for purposes, whether good or bad.
I know why we're discussing it. It's because we're trying to help our citizens, you know, lower their tax
Right.
requirements. But this is something that our citizens have told us themselves that they want us to do. At least two or three of them have come up when they were talking about the RHID, saying that it goes against our comprehensive plan. They're telling us they want a new comprehensive plan. They want to know what our plan is.
Actually, River Ben Hites could not have been against our comprehensive plan because that land wasn't in the city.
Although it wasn't a future land use quote.
It, it references, the comprehensive plan will also look at annexation and where we might want to think of annexing first. And so, you know, what the, what the current doesn't, didn't have was the fact that we ran sewer line out to McIntyre, right? I think that changes the calculus immensely for stuff like annexation. So there was, there was discussion about the areas to be annexed and the types of housing that would work in that, those areas. To answer your question, it's feasible and we will work with the contractor. Comprehensive plan, like I said, 12, 12, 15 months is not abnormal. 18 months and getting into large cities, two years is not unheard of. So it's, it is something that happens and it's something that happens on the radio.
The last time we had multiple meetings, and they were all over town. There were meetings at the schools.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll reach out to school board, the school board, schools themselves.
More than a year than if, from that, just to split. If it's going to be done within a year, well, then we're going to have to pay for it now.
You don't even know, you don't even know if they can do it within the year. I mean, he may get the, they may say, oh, well, we can't put you on our books for another year.
I mean, there's a real chance the RFP is lower than what we have budgeted to, right? There's a potential for that.
There's a potential.
There is.
I, I say we just do it, get it over with.
Yeah, I think what you brought up, what the council's done and the city's done since 2021, as far as keeping the mills down and all that, I think, I think we should just go ahead and do it and not kick the can down the road.
Yeah.
And you were probably doing it before 2021 also, but that's just the numbers you brought up.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, anybody else on this one? Okay, we closed the public hearing. So we are now going to recommend a motion to approve the proposed 2026 budget.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Call or roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports, department heads, any department heads?
I think it's me. We wanted to talk a little bit about a letter that was sent out from my office that I sent out on Friday regarding signs, political signage, and just kind of, I'd like to open it up to the council. I know that Mr. Clemens has, has spoke with me a couple of times and I believe Tim as well. Currently, our zoning ordinance, our unified development ordinance has regulations regarding temporary signs. We don't have a call out for political signs precisely. It is just temporary signage. And there is a, there is a, a limit of 90 days per our UDO for temporary signs. And I would classify that as, as your traditional yard sign. Just the, the wire, the H-frame wire with a small, I won't say cardboard, but you guys know what I'm talking about. A corrugated sign. So I sent out a letter to all of the, a, a letter to all of the candidates for USD 469 and the city council and sent out an email on Friday, last Friday, to those who had emails in the, from the, the county's documentation for those things. So that was sent out and it said essentially, complicating the matter is the fact that the state has created special rules for political signs for the 47 days surrounding elections. So I referenced that in the letter and I know that a couple of you received those letters and emails and just wanted to see if there was anything that needed to be, anything else that needed to be said or questions you had regarding that.
I'll tell you. Do we have a different policy between, prior to adopting the UDO? Because I know we had a bunch of ordinances and then we adopted the UDO and then we've been changing stuff ever since based on things that come up.
Yeah.
Do we have a different one?
This, I don't know what the, so the current UDO was adopted in 2019. I don't know what existed prior to that. This section has not changed since 2019 when it was installed or adopted, I guess.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the policy has been in place at least four or five years. So right around the time of the UDO, I would imagine. Mr. Clemens, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I mean, we do have presidents, the last couple of election cycles where we treated signs on private property differently than what's in the right of way. And in the spirit of protecting private property to the owners of the private property, I would encourage us to continue that. It is private property unless, I mean, unless there's a reason, like it's obscene or it's causing a hazard. They can't put a four by eight sign, you know, it has all of the residential stuff. But I don't see a political sign, a temporary sign being the same because it introduces ambiguity. Most people reading the UDO is not going to translate temporary sign to political sign. And when you read the section on political sign, it only talks about the right of way. So I think we need to tighten ours up a little bit more to separate the two. Where they're common, say they're common. But I think we need to get rid of the ambiguity. That's my personal feelings, but for two years treating public property differently and then all of a sudden we tighten it up, I'm not saying that it's wrong. I'm just saying we failed to substantiate it in the UDOs in previous years. I think it's time to do that.
I think, I think they tried to simplify it by this one, this process. Because before, I remember, it actually talked about the measurement the sign had to be from the corner. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
And it was very specific about where those signs had to be.
Yeah.
And it became a real mess for a while.
I understand, but that's, you're talking about the right of ways.
Right. So I mean, it's.
Yes. If you lived on a corner, that sign had to be a specific spot on your property, even though it was private property, because it had to be so many feet from the corner.
But, but the right of way on a private property is like the first 11 feet.
Right, yes, I understand.
He's, he's talking about private property versus right of way.
Yeah, I think, I think that was, to Mr. Clemens's point, I think that was a lot of the feedback that we got was, you know, are we regulating right of way or the area beyond the, I think it's 15 or 20 feet, but you're, you're correct.
If I put a sign two feet from my house, it's not in your right of way. And I don't think that we as the city need to be in business of going onto somebody's private property and pulling a sign. That is wrong.
Are we doing it?
Yes.
We are?
We would walk through the code enforcement process, which would, you know, involve sending a letter. We wouldn't necessarily enter onto property immediately.
But right now, we're saying.
Was it outside the date? Was it outside the date? The, the June, June 21st date?
It, it could be, but 90 days is a long time.
Right.
So like, there's a, there's a, there's a long time.
There's something to those, hey, I just put up a roof sign on private property that's sitting out there for 45, 50 days. Like, nobody's, nobody's going to that roofer and saying, hey, why is your sign? Like, because we just did their roof, so they're just advertising. So, I mean, it's the same thing, in my view. Like, if it's my private property, what is the issue? Right of way is always about security and, you know, line of sight and all that in city property, right? I mean, right of way, get it off our right of way.
We.
I got that part, but the private property part is kind of, you know. It, it's nebulous because it's my property, right? I mean, if I want to put somebody's sign on my property and it's not in the right of way, it's not bugging anybody. But again, you can say, well, I'm just going to stick that sign up there for six years, even though the mayor, Mayor McNeil already, you know, lost last year. I'm just sticking that baby out there, you know? I mean, we, at the same time, there's got to be a limit of like what you're doing. I think the 90 days is what the, the limit is.
That's what I'm tippering on.
Yeah, but I mean, it's 45 days prior, right? And then 45 days prior to the next election.
And some people got a control with it too, like, like the island of valley of the Vida.
Right. Everybody puts a sign on there and nobody owns it but the city.
I understand that. So some of the candidates, even for the school, that school zone goes into Leavenworth. So that means the candidates not only have to figure out what's the Leavenworth rules, what's the Lansing rules and what's in High Prairie.
But I think we should control the city right, I mean, that's, that's what our UDO should just talk about.
My concern is the extra increase on our ordinance bill. It goes out and, and does the work to, you know, either write a citation or write a letter. That's a lot of work and time that he has to do for something. Do we really want him focusing on signs? Or do we want him to focus on things that are more important?
Yeah, I mean, I.
I think the right of way.
The right of way, the right of way, you should be, I mean, that's part of the city right to take those down. On private property, no, maybe you don't waste your time.
I agree.
Somebody wants to leave the sign up because they're running for council for another two years, even though they, they won or lost.
What was, what was the rationale for having that ordinance with the signs?
That is, that's an excellent question.
I remember coming on the council and, and I thought of that. You know, when I, the first, first year I ran, I thought, no, why is there a timeline? I, I never understood that.
Some of that is laid out in statute though. Even Kansas state statute refers to 45 days before the primary, two days after, 45 days. But I think that's, is that referring to? But I think that's, is that referring to right-of-way though?
Yeah, well, that says private property and right-of-way.
No, it says private property before, and then it goes into right-of-way with the time zone.
Yeah.
I think, I think that needs legal review, because I don't think private property falls into the 45. I think the state statute talks right-of-way with the 45.
But then the state changed that, right?
Ken, can you pull up the statute real quick?
Really, I mean, there's been a lot of debate about the statute.
Because this wasn't really a issue until the state got...
Yeah, it, that's fairly accurate. 2015, it says, so, on the statutes, it has, has the history, so I think it has only been implemented one time, and it has not been amended since. So, established in 2015, and then it doesn't look like it's been changed since.
I could easily read that, the first sentence. You can't regulate or prohibit placement of the number of signs on private property, or the unpaved right-of-way or city streets or county roads on private property during them. That "or" is a different condition. I don't read it, private and the right-of-way being underneath the same condition.
All right.
I'm just saying, there's enough ambiguity. I would want to get a reading on that.
Sure. And we could, we could talk to Greg about that. The way that I've read that is, is private and...
Yeah, but I can tell you, like Johnson County reads it as two different parts.
Yeah. Okay.
To me, to me, even if it's on private property...
We'll deal with it again.
I mean, I think, you can't regulate the private property part, you can regulate within the 45 days.
You can't regulate private property part because it's a signage problem. I mean, suppose you have a sign in your yard for 60 days, and I don't want to look at it for 60...
I still have mine.
Huh?
Vote for me. Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 I mean, the way I read it, and I'm not a lawyer, but it says you can't regulate or prohibit the placement of political signs on private property, or the unpaved right-of-way for city streets or roads and property during the 45-day period prior to an election. So it's property or the right, you know, the unpaid right-of-way.
Right.
So I mean, saying we probably shouldn't be regulating that. Now, on the right-of-way, I'm, I'm good with that, the 45 days before or after.
And I don't think it should be on city property without permission of the city, depending on what it is.
Right.
Correct.
And I, and for me, political signs also includes those organizations that have a political aspect to their signs, because they keep popping up on De Soto, but your candidates can't put it out there, and you still have political signage popping up.
Those aren't in the city, though.
On De Soto Road?
The ones on the, on the west side?
No, east side.
Oh, okay. Those aren't, that's...
No, I'm talking about the yard sign that keeps popping up across from the graveyard.
I thought you were talking about the big ones on the west side, so, sorry.
And all I'm asking for is consistency.
If, we will, if, yeah, I mean, if you guys want to strive to be more consistent, we could do that for this year, and if there's a desire to, to relook at this, maybe we can do that after the election. And I, you know, one thing that I, I just want to clarify too, you know, there's always that saying, you're not, you're not doing your job if you're not making somebody angry. Josh and I have been doing a really good job, because we, we probably had, we probably had three or four people reach out to us to complain about yard signs going up too early. So we sent out the letter, and then we had people complaining about the letter. So we, staff is kind of getting it on both sides of this issue. I do want to make sure you guys understand that.
Social media, too.
Yeah, so anyway, if, if the goal is to remain consistent with, with what we've done the previous election cycle, we can do that for this year, and then maybe at a future council meeting, if you guys want to talk about if we want to tighten this up, if we do want, you know, what we want to kick around, we can do that. But if, if the goal, and then we can, and if, yeah, and if we, if we change anything, we can try to let people know right-of-way, you know, if, if we do change our precedent, so.
I mean, to their point, I mean, every time we say thou shall not, the code enforcement people have more work to do. Just leave the public, I mean, leave the private property out of it and focus on the right-of-way where it's causing distractions and possible wrecks.
Yeah. And, and just so everyone knows too, and you or Mike could correct me if I'm wrong too, but I think right-of-way is usually, what, 15, 16 feet beyond the curb? Is that...
It varies so much.
It varies?
The flat is the way to determine it. We use a general 15 feet behind the curb as a rule of thumb, but anytime we have to go enforce anything, the first thing we do is we look at the flat to determine what it is. And even then, we get close, the only way to actually know is to get it surveyed with an official land survey.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna do that, but I mean, just in general, 15 feet. Tony, did you have something?
If I could add it to you, because I have told people in my line of work, if you want to know where your property line versus the right-of-way versus, you know, look for your water meter. Your water meter is on the private property side of that imaginary line that separates right-of-way from your true personal property. So it's not a...
Tony, I can't hear you. Can you say that part again?
I'm sorry. Sure. What I instruct residents, when I talk with them about sewer lines and where manholes and all those things are, is it's a good rule of thumb to locate where your water meter pit is in your yard. Traditionally, they're always in the front of your yard. Not always, but traditionally. Those water meter pits are on the private side of the right-of-way line. So if you don't want to go get a tape measure and you want to get it, you know, look for your water meter and say, okay, well, it kind of lines up with the curb and it's gonna, my line, my, my, my curb line is straight, my water meter's here, if I go right beyond it, chances are, you're, you're on your private property and you will not be in the right-of-way. Just a good rule of thumb.
I think that would be true. No more my, so water meters is in my yard as to the street.
Because, because the water meter belongs to the resident, to the property owner, so it can't be in the right-of-way.
Right.
So it goes just outside the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
All right. Appreciate that.
Get ready to talk about this in two years.
All right.
Right? We're gonna change it in two years, we'll change it again.
I think Ms. Pearson wanted to speak.
20 seconds. Yeah, I mean, I can. Sure. Come on.
I don't want to offer public comment. I just, I was trying to find out, are you going to hear public comment? Because a lot of us hell are public.
Yeah, so public comment, like, up in front? When I said, is there anybody who wants to speak to the council on an item that isn't on the agenda? This isn't on the agenda. This is not on the agenda.
Isn't it on the agenda on the last item?
No.
Item eight?
Item eight?
Right here. Election sign brochure, other items.
It is, other items of interest.
Well, I stand corrected.
So you will hear public comment?
I will hear public comment.
But you get to items?
Three minutes.
So you're not gonna act on it now, you're gonna hear...
For three minutes.
For three minutes? It's not on my item eight, but yes, I have like, three items on my agenda, so.
It's, it's just more of like an FYI. It wasn't an action item, but...
Right. So it's not officially on the agenda, but I'm gonna let anybody talk who wants to talk. So if you have something to talk about on this topic, please come up and talk. How easy going about that?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Pierce. My husband, Chris Pierce, wanted to be here tonight, but he's speaking at another engagement. He assures me, though, that he approves this message. To some, this whole sign debacle may seem like a small thing, but to us, it's about something much bigger: government accountability, fairness, and protecting the rights guaranteed to us by the Constitution. I brought my daughter, Mackenzie, with me tonight because I wanted to see why it's important to know your rights and to stand up when the government tries to step on them. If we stay silent, even on the small issues, what's to stop all of our rights from being chipped away piece by piece? And it's not just my opinion. In 1994, the US Supreme Court, the highest court in the land, in City of Ladoo versus Galio, struck down restrictions on residential signs because they intruded too far on free expression. The court made it clear, the government cannot selectively shut down political speech in people's own yards. The email reprimanding us that we all saw up there claimed we violated the city's rules. I think we've already talked about how ambiguous this information is. Here's the problem: when the government takes an unclear rule and twists it into a reason to limit citizens' rights, that's overreach, especially when, before we ever put up a single sign, my husband went into Public Works for Guidance and was told, as were two others who called, that these regulations do not apply to private property. And let's be honest, if this is really about the appearance of our city, then why is the golf course on Eisenhower, one of the busiest streets in town, allowed to look so rundown? Why do we drive past lawns that are two feet tall without action? But when it comes to citizens expressing their political views on their own property, suddenly the city cracks down. Even more concerning, like Mr. Clemens mentioned, I've personally seen signs for an anti-Trump group displayed at the edge of yards, in Lansing, and along busy roads. Those remain untouched. And let's just be clear, just because the group isn't a candidate doesn't make their message non-political. It is political speech, the very type of speech the First Amendment most strongly protects. In fact, in the City of Ladoo versus Galio case, the court specifically recognized that yard signs are a unique and vital way for people to express their political and social views. Yet while those remained standing, ours, placed with permission on private property, were ordered to come down. That's not fairness, that's selective enforcement. And this is the heart of the issue. When rules are ambiguous and that this government applies them unevenly, citizens lose trust because what's being enforced isn't the law, it's the preference of whoever happens to be in charge. That's not how our system is supposed to work. I hope you'll stand with us in making sure Lansing's government is as fair and trustworthy as its people deserve. And my address is 404 Maple Court, I forgot to say that.
Okay, thank you. I think most of us agreed with that. The private property issue.
Well, I don't think we can dispute that, no.
Yeah, I think we can. Uh-oh. Okay. You brought a sign.
I'm Kirsten Workman. I live at 331 Sage. I'm here to address Agenda Item Eight and the letter sent by the Economic Development Department requiring candidates to remove their signs from residential yards. What I'm not here to do, to dispute is how the city regulates signs placed in right-of-ways and on street corners and other public places when the Kansas statute allows you to do so. Everything I have to say is in reference to what I place in my own front yard, in my juniper bushes, that is of my own concern, clear of any city or utility easements. The statute 25-2711 limits your authority to regulate sign placement for 47 days surrounding an election, but it doesn't require you to do that outside of those 45 days. If you're gonna take it upon yourself as a city to regulate speech using time limits or exempting certain categories of signage or speech, then it should take caution to communicate those regulations clearly and enforce them consistently. The rules it publishes in the sign brochure are not clear, and they haven't been clear. They weren't clear two years ago, I was told the exact same thing, it doesn't apply to private property. But that letter clearly states that it does. The ordinance section, ordinance eight, at the very end, that talks about temporary signages or signs, does limit to the 90 days or whatever, but what I'm concerned about is the fact that the city will not enforce regulations about this type of sign in my yard. I had a similar sign to this in my yard for over a year, and nobody said, actually, it was closer to two years. And so that's not gonna be addressed by the city, but this one suddenly is. And so that is selectively choosing how you enforce your ordinance based on the content of the speech that's being expressed. This is in poor condition, and this has been in my yard for about five years or more, actually closer to 10, when I think about it. And it's in terrible shape, and nobody complains or sends letters about that. This has been in my yard, it's pretty terrible shape, too. This has been here for several years, and this is because I got tired of picking up other people's animals' waste in my front yard. And so I said, hey, please, feel free to use it, but here's some bags in case you forgot one. And nobody's objected to the temporary, this feeds the criteria for a temporary sign, but it's been there for years. And so there's been no letters, no communication from anyone about that.
I actually like that sign.
It's a good one. I think it's nice, but also says, don't let your dog go in my yard, or leave, don't leave it there. It's well-established that special respect for individual liberty in the home has long been part of our nation's culture and law. Content-based regulation of speech is unconstitutional, as the federal district court found in the case of City of Ladoo versus Galio, which I have a copy of, and I would encourage you to read it, I'd be happy to leave a copy for you. There's an executive summary where I've highlighted sections where the Supreme Court, in the federal, or the federal court, there's two courts, there's two actually cases I have here today, and I don't want to run out of time, but I'd like to leave it for you. I just want you to, in closing, please figure out how to enforce that equitably and fairly. Everybody's rights matter. Please don't abuse your authority, provoke the residents, especially on constitutional issues. You'll make our city vulnerable to lawsuits. I won't presume to know what's in the hearts of those who possess code enforcement authority, but I will say I'm surprised that the optics of this enforcement and the timing of it should have been enough to exercise a higher level of restraint. And I'm always willing to talk with any of you, and I've extended that invitation. Please, please do that to me privately, and don't send comments to me to the back of the room from, from the bench. Thank you very much.
Can I have a copy of the...
Sure.
We have a copy.
I want to talk to the sign.
Sorry? I, I, it's on Amazon, I'll send you the link. Okay, so, this one, and who should I pass this to?
Give it to her.
Okay. Thanks.
I think pretty much, I believe we need to change, as far as private property signage, it's like, we shouldn't be regulating that.
You just make political signs.
Yeah. Not again.
But we never let anybody do that.
But we have to make the change. Okay, good discussion on that one.
I never had my question answered, or...
My fault, Z's.
No? Not your fault. Why was, why was there that, why were we involved with signs, political signs on private property in the first place?
We're involved, we are involved in signage. It has been made clear, especially over the past couple of years, that we can regulate time, place, and manner. Sign regulations are to be content-neutral. So it doesn't matter what the sign is, per se, Mrs. Workman is correct. We can regulate the placement and the time and the manner in which the signs are up. So we're not in the business of regulating political signage, per se. But signage is, is something that we, is long been a part of the regulations, the zoning regulations precisely, and then our development ordinance as it stands today. So the, I know that's not a great answer, but we, we care about what signs look like. We care about what's gonna go in town center. We care about what goes for industrial and commercial. We also care about what happens in, in residential areas as well.
So I guess my next question would be then, our neighbors in Tongi, Basra, they had similar...
I will not, I will say that they, without knowing the regulations, they have sign regulations. I don't know what they say per se, exactly, precisely, and I also don't know how they enforce them. That varies from city to city.
Okay, and then the state got involved?
Yep. With, in 2015, with that...
So they're, so somebody called them on, probably?
I believe so, because I think there's a state Supreme Court case, but I think the state Supreme Court case almost kind of conflicts with, there's a 2019 case from Arizona.
Gilbert, yeah, Gilbert versus, I can't remember who, but yeah, the town of Gilbert.
So I, I...
There's a lot of conflict. The bottom line, I think the crux of the issue is private property versus city right-of-way, and what the city should be telling people to put in the city right-of-way. I totally agree, we have to have an ordinance that says, if you're putting it in the city right-of-way, it's gonna look like this, it's gonna be from this time to this time, but private property, no. Like, what, why are we imposing...
I'm not, I'm not...
I'm just telling you what the crux of the issue is. Yeah.
I'm not disputing that. I just wanted to know why they had the rule in the first place. That's all I wanted. So, you help me.
Josh is right, different cities enforce it different ways. Josh is right, different cities enforce it different ways. Like I, I think there's cities that you can drive around now in mid-August and I don't think you'll see very many political yard signs and I, we, we thought 94 days was a lot. I guess it's, perhaps we need more and, and we need to spell that out clearer, I guess. But, but I, different cities enforce it different ways. I know Mr. Clemens sent me an article talking about all of the different cities in Johnson County who enforce it differently. So I mean, it's, different cities enforce it differently.
Okay. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
And unfortunately, the state statute is interpreted different by several different attorneys, so that's a problem. We just need to decide what we want.
Were you asking for comment here or just?
I thought we commented on that.
Let's move on.
Any other comments? I think that was enough. Any other department heads?
Ida Street's open, in case you didn't know.
City attorney isn't here tonight, city administrator, what do you got?
So one thing, I think we've mentioned this before, but I'll, I'll pass it along again. Terry's done a great job getting grants for our library. And one of the other things that I really like about what Terry does, we're, we're kind of limited by our square footage and our footprint at the library. But if you think about the last several years, we've added that study room, we've redone the front counter, we've, we've kind of reconfigured that area where the, the book sale goes. So I, I really like that we've done all of these things to expand our catalog and kind of expand the space we have. So we got a grant for $35,000 for 2026 and potentially also in 2027. Terry's looking at utilizing that, specific to library related issues. She's looking at using that to purchase new shelving for our library and where that kind of expands our space a little bit. The new shelves are a little bit more narrow, so we can have more shelves. So we're kind of expanding the library catalog by getting these new shelves. There won't be a back on the shelves, so it'll be more natural light, a little bit of a brighter library, easier for parents to keep tabs on their kids. So really, really proud of Terry and the job she's done at the library. Just doing everything we can to make the space we have, that footprint we have, as, as welcoming and as, as efficient as possible, so kudos to Terry on that.
The outdoor reading area.
In the outdoor reading area, exactly. I mean, just all of these different things we've done to utilize that limited space we have, so, so yeah. We are, we are hoping to have the new fire truck here for the September 4th meeting, hopefully. I think they're just doing some last minute things, but should be here in two weeks, so we're, we're really excited about that. You know, like we had spoken about, kudos to Chief Gates, kudos to the outgoing Fire Board, kudos to the city council for planning ahead. By doing that last year, we got it a few months early by paying for it upfront. I want to say we, we got a $20,000 or $30,000 discount when we purchased that truck and there's zero debt associated with it. So, so that will be a great thing for us when we get that. So that will be at the city council meeting, hopefully in two weeks. So that will be a fabulous thing. So the last thing, and this is more of an FYI. So a lot of questions and discussion about RHID stuff the last several months. So the Riverbend Heights one, that one got voted down at the county level. There are a couple more, as you guys know, that are kind of working their way through the process. And one of the things that I, I do agree and I empathize with citizens, it's, it's challenging to follow that stuff when it's 50 pages of legal documents. You know what I mean? I, I get that. So one of the things we've been working on, we've been trying to do kind of concise FAQ sheets, like frequently asked questions to kind of try to explain it to citizens so they don't have to read a 50-page legal document. I don't know if you can pull up one of those? Maybe. So this is the one for Fairlane Town Homes, which is going through the process right now. So just kind of talks about where it's located, what type of housing it would be, you know, where the funds come from, things like that. So we're going to try to disseminate things like this a little bit more to kind of answer questions because again, I, I do understand and empathize, it's, it's hard to follow some things when you're looking at 50 pages of legal documents. If you want to go down to the second page too. So we tried to have an aerial photo of the parcel, as well as what the parcel looks like now. The two parcels that are kind of working their way through the process right now, they're both vacant parcels. They've both been vacant ever since Lansing has been a city undeveloped. You know, looking at them, a person could almost make the argument that they're blighted. So that's what the, the location for the next phase of Fairlane Town Homes would look like. The top is the aerial kind of showing where it is in relation to the rest of the community. So, so again, we'll, we'll try to disseminate these a little bit more. We'll try to put them on the website to try to answer some questions. But I know that's been a hot topic for, for several months, so we just wanted to try to educate people a little more.
That's a great effort. So are we going to do one of these for every proposed RHID project?
So there's only, there's only two left. But yeah, we have one for this and then there's also one for Monroe Manor, so, yep. That's all I've got.
Okay. We will go around the horn, starting with Dan.
We did have an LCPA, but I did not get up here to give this to Tish. I'll give it to her, so the agenda and all the attachments will be sent out after the meeting. Josh, like I said before, I wouldn't want your job when it comes to code enforcement. Thank you for what you do, even if I don't agree with you. I appreciate what you do. Thank you for Ida Street. My wife is much happier not having to go around all that. And with that, that's everything I've got there.
All right, thanks. Kerry?
Kerry, thanks for your work. Really appreciate it. And to everybody that spoke tonight, thank you. It's government work and I, and I, I like that, so. And then on, with the council, I think we did a great job of really doing our best to do what is best for our city and for our constituents. So even though people may not tell us we did a good job on that, I'll do it. So, thank you. It's my attempt at humor. And that's all I got.
All right, thanks Kerry. Dan?
Well, kudos to Terry as always. She's done a wonderful job out there with the, with the library and keep up the good work. I don't have anything else there.
All right, thanks Kevin.
Terry, I don't know how you keep outdoing yourself every year, but you do and you keep raising a bar over there, so it's much appreciated. Department heads, council, Beth, Tim, doing a great job. We did, council has been doing it for a long time, but yes, I agree with keeping the mill levy where it's at and keeping our city strong financially.
Thanks Kevin. Gene?
I can't add anything, but it's already been said.
Okay, Jake?
Yeah, kind of echo everyone's statements. Tony, the smoothing out gamble right there off Ida, there was a big improvement on that street. So maybe an unintended consequence of, of the street, but it's nice to drive over now. I appreciate that.
It was a collaborative effort.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gone, it's nice and smooth.
A lot of margaritas got spilled.
Yeah. They don't ever, everybody said, thanks Kerry for all your hard work for the library. Thanks to all our leadership and our employees in the city. And I know, I know Beth, you worked really hard on the budget, I appreciate your hard work. And yes, thank goodness that Ida is open. You know, you really don't appreciate how easy it is to get in and out of your neighborhood until you live a block from a street that is closed and you have to go around every time. And you're going to work and you're half asleep and you turn the wrong direction. So thank you for getting that back open. Thanks for all your hard work on that project. That's all I've got.
All right, thanks, SGP.
Sir, just want to mention and follow up, Beth, Tony, Josh, Terry, you guys are doing great work. Really appreciate everything you do. Something, someone that may not get as much credit as they do are the people that are working with our waste management section, making sure the billing gets taken care of. And when there's a problem with the waste management, I know that they get a lot of calls. I personally made a call last week after my receptacle was damaged during a recent pickup and I made a quick phone call. I had outstanding service by the city and within a week I had a new can. That just shows the excellence that we have in our town, so just thank you to everybody. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'll roll.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kavalewski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.